Well, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome. I'm Mayor Angela Burney and this is Council President Vanessa Crisser. And we're just here today to do a brief overview of what is expected of a council member. And then we'll have time at the end to answer any questions that you might have. We are recording this. We're not live streaming it. So if you or if you hear of anyone else who's interested, we'll be posting that so that people can listen to it later. So once again, welcome, everyone. We are just trying to give you some brief information about what is expected of a council position in the city of Redmond. We have, as I'm certain you all know, we have a position open. Councilmember Slahudine was elected into the legislature, and so he has resigned. We have until the beginning of February to, the council has until the beginning of February to appoint the position. The expectation is that we will accept applications through December and beginning of January. And then the council will go through the applications, make a short list, depending on how many applications come in, do a set of interviews in mid-January, and then the goal is to make the appointment on the January 20th meeting, doing final interviews. So just to give you kind of a big view of all of that. I'm going to give you some information about just the city of Redmond, our former government, being a council member, our city's organizational structure and departments, any helpful resources that I know of and that we know of for you to take a look at, and then where to ask direct questions if you think of others later. So just really general background about the city of Redmond. We were incorporated December 31st, 1912. We are 17.25 square miles total, and our population is closing in on 85,000 people. We have 10 neighborhoods with downtown and overlay containing the city's two urban centers and Marymore Village. I don't know why they didn't let that one off. And we have 47 parks, 59 miles of public trails, of which 39 are owned and operated by the city. We have four light rail stations that recently opened and look forward to the rest of the tune line going across the lake at the beginning of next year. We also, another great addition to our community is we opened the senior community center just over a year ago that you can see outside. Oh, is there anything else you'd like to share about the city? Just a general background?
I guess I'd say if you want to be able to hear about what are some of the priorities of our city, one of the good places to look is our comprehensive plan. Last year, we passed our vision that goes through 2050 for, you know, where we want our city to go. And that includes chapters on kind of each of the different things that we think about when we think about how our city can grow in a way that's sustainable, equitable, and inclusive. Another really great place, if you want to kind of look shorter term, not just within 30 years, is that our council, really, our city has worked on a community strategic plan that has some of the pillars of some of the things we want to work on in the shorter term, which include things like housing choices for all, affordable housing, diversity, equity, and inclusion, environmental sustainability, enhancing public safety, and then making sure that we care for our infrastructure. So you can read some of the details on what that looks like, and it's something that probably whoever's newest on the council will be joining in with us on updating that and kind of creating that next set of vision. And I think it's an exciting time for our council as we move from some years of kind of developing and working with thousands of people in our community on setting this vision into actually passing the policies to make that vision a reality. So it's going to be a fun and meaty job for someone to jump in on.
Great, thanks. So with that, and I'll share some more resources later as well, this is called a strong mayor council form of government. We don't have a city manager. I run the city. Council is seven members, and they pass ordinances and resolutions that advise on policy. We also all work together. I run the city. I manage the staff. Counsel is a part-time job, sometimes feels like more than that, a part-time job on Tuesdays along with some other commitments as well. We're a non-charter code city, so it's a specific kind of city. It's governed by the RCW 35A, so when the state passes something, we have to do it. There are charter cities in the state that are different than us. So like the city of Seattle is a charter city, so sometimes they can do things that we can't do because they have their own charter. So the code city requirements do govern a lot of the things that we do. Councilmembers themselves are responsible for policy-level decisions. I oversee the administration. We have a chief operating officer that also helps manage the operations. Then we have directors below that that manage department-level decisions. And mostly, we try to interact. Counsel can work with the directors, but counsel doesn't work with staff level. So that's a kind of a messy topic to talk about, so we'll just leave it at that. If you were to become a council member, the council is ruled by their rules of procedure as well as all of the RCWs in the state. And in that, they have council member expectations, their council meeting schedule, they have rules on quorum and attendance, which are also state rules as well. You are required to be at the meetings, and the rules are very loose. So you can be excused, but if you are unexcused for more than three business meetings, then you can get expelled from council. But we've never run into that. But that's why the state rules are kind of big, and then the council rules for procedure narrows it down to what their expectations are of each other. I don't know if you want to talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, well, I will note that in terms of also the kind of governance structure, so the council itself elects at the beginning of every two years after council elections have occurred. So this will happen, the first meeting in January, they elect council leadership from amongst the body. And they'll elect a president and vice president. And that president and vice president typically work with the mayor and the staff to be able to set the agenda for the policies the council is going to work on. And they also bring things to the council for discussion that are coming up in terms of different issues in the community and to figure out how do we bring those through council if there is a policy lens for us to be able to work on in regards to that. I'd note, one of the other responsibilities of the council that I just want to underscore is also passing the budget for the city, the biennial budget. And that's, I think, one of our biggest responsibilities. And we do that every other year. It's a biennial budget. In the last several years, it's been a little over $1 billion. So it's a big budget, and we spend quite a few months on it during budget years. So next fall, since we do it every other year, we'll spend a good chunk of time in meetings, both on our regular meetings as well as some special meetings, to be able to go through all the different pieces. But we'll begin even from the beginning of the year, working with the mayor's office to be able to identify what are the things that we want to invest in as a city? How do we make sure that we're spending taxpayer dollars as effectively as possible for the impacts that we want? And how do we make sure that we're really sparing innovation via our budget? And we do that kind of through collaborative work together because the council sets the budget, but then the mayor executes upon it and the staff execute on it. And oftentimes during that execution, we'll often have that discussion as it's being executed upon during the biennium as well.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. That's also online. If you haven't taken a look at our budget, I highly recommend looking at it. We don't do a budget like a lot of cities do. We do budgeting by priorities. And so it keeps us at a higher level in thinking about what are we spending our money on to ensure that we're meeting the needs of the community and those values. So it is a different process. Some cities do use that. We've refined it over the years, but we found that it really meets the needs of our community. I like to think of it as if you go on vacation, you could budget for your hotel and your car and your, you know, activities separately, or you could just call it, we're going on vacation to, say, Disney World. And these are all of the things that go into having a great vacation. So the way we do priorities is like all the things that go into ensuring that we have a wonderful park system that works for our community and all the engagement that goes along with that. So as you take a look at it, I think that it will make more sense.
And also, our budget is set into two different types of budgets. So we have our operating budget, which pays for our staff and ongoing expenses and kind of all the programs of the city. And then we have a capital budget that is actually kind of the pieces of infrastructure that we invest in, the buildings, things like the rebuild of our new old firehouse teen center, for example. So, you know, things like that. And sometimes we make changes to that budget during the biennium. The capital investment program, which specifically does the capital side of it, is set with a six-year timeframe, and we approve kind of the two years as part of the two-year process, but with the vision of what's coming up in the six years. So I'll just say for anyone out there who's like, "I want to see this built in Redmond," that's going to be the piece where you'll be able to engage in. But sometimes we have to look kind of further out, and they often engage with our bigger plans. For example, you know, parks and recreation, the things that end up on there also show up in our park plan, which is our longer plan for what do we want to see for parks and recreation and arts and culture in our community over time. So I would just note, I think that's a really exciting part of being a council member and something where we do a lot of collaboration with the administration. Only other thing I was going to note on kind of duties of being a council member as we start to intro that is, as the mayor mentioned, you know, there's some basic expectations to attend our meetings, which include, we always do what we call Committee of the Whole, which you'll see every week at 4:30, from 4:30 to 5:30, we break up our work into committees to be able to deep dive on different topics. And then, and a lot of times, the work that we do in those committees, we'll send things from those committees to then vote on at our business meetings for the official vote, but we'll have a lot of those conversations early. And in other councils, sometimes they only have a couple members that are part of a committee. But we have every council member on every committee, so we call them Committee of the Whole, which means that if you're a council member, you're expected to come from 4:30 to 5:30 and as long as that meeting goes. And then also the meetings that start at 7 o'clock, which are the business meeting, and then the study session every other week, where we also do some more studying of topics before we vote on them. And then one of the other things is in terms of expectations, and my hope for whoever wants to join the council is that in recent years, the council's been really excited about not just doing those kinds of basic meetings, but also being out in community because it's not always comfortable for everyone to come and sit in these seats or stand up at the mic and talk to us. So we've been wanting to go out into community more. We've established a quarterly cadence of what we call council conversations, where we've been going to different neighborhoods and doing two hours of community conversation. But also, oftentimes, when we're engaging on particular topics, we'll have stakeholder meetings or opportunities to be in subcommittee to focus on a particular topic. So I think we'll really be looking, as a council member, to join our group, someone who wants to be able to really engage in all of that and be able to kind of source what we're doing deeply in connection with our community.
Great. And then one other thing I'll mention, she talked about some of the plans we have. We also, cities are known for their plans. We pass a lot of plans. But what that does, it gives us direction for when we do our budget. We have done like a transportation master plan, we're in the middle of right now, that will be passed early next year. And that gives us the guidance for what we'll be doing. So coming in as a council member, any elected official, I always think of it as being you're in this seat for a point in time. Things have happened before you, things will happen after you, but you kind of end up embracing the things that have been already passed before until it's time to take a look and change things. Sometimes world events make you do things differently, and you maybe speed up your schedule about taking a look at things, but you really do have an opportunity to embrace all of that. I think a great example of that is the light rail stations that I mentioned earlier. People before me planned for that. People before us planned for that. We were able to be part of the finalization of opening them up and planning for all the housing around them and all of that. And as it continues on, it's a resource that will be in the community for years to come, decades to come. And councils and mayors beyond us will think of the next thing to do with things like that. But that's a piece of infrastructure that we get to take advantage of. So I try to think of it a more global sense and a big, long-term about the role that this is. Yeah, did you want anything?
I just thought of one other thing, just to flag in terms of expectations. The council also sometimes has special types of meetings that we do. For example, after we appoint this person in February, where we'll be taking either a Saturday or Sunday, we're trying to finalize the date, likely the 14th or 15th of February, to have a full-day retreat of the council. And that will be an open public meeting, so anyone can come and watch it. But it'll be in a more like kind of relaxed space for the council to be able to spend a lot of deep time with each other and to be able to talk about things, for example, like our council rules of procedure, to say, you know, what are some of the things we want to make sure are the boundaries we're all going to agree on in how we govern ourselves, as well as what are some of the policies we want to focus on. We also do things like, in January, we'll go, most of us will go to Olympia together to advocate to our legislators for our city's legislative agenda, which our council has passed. And we'll go to the Association of Washington Cities Conference to be able to connect. One of the other things that we do kind of throughout the year is that council members have the opportunity to serve on different regional boards and committees. And many of those, the mayor appoints us to. And then some of them, we have the opportunity to apply to just as council members through kind of regional networks. But many council members will, in addition to kind of the Tuesdays, are spending time doing those. I think I serve on about seven different regional boards and committees. For example, I'm chair of our local salmon recovery council for the Riot 8 watershed, and I also am chairing our Eastside Transportation Partnership right now, which is a meeting of all of our Eastside cities to talk monthly about transportation issues and think about how we can collaborate. So that's just kind of an example, but those are some other kind of cool opportunities of being a council member. And one where we also, I think, as a council, hopefully, will spend time strategically thinking about how can we be not just doing the work here in our community, but connecting the regional work from our community across to our neighboring cities to be even more impactful.
Because we're doing great things in Redmond, and so I want to make sure, we want to make sure that we are learning from all the other communities, but also sharing what Redmond's doing outside of just the city itself. So it's a great opportunity for council members to be able to participate in that. I do as well.
You do a lot.
Yeah, I do.
Mayor Burney serves on like 30 things.
No, it's not 30.
So many.
So all of that's kind of the really cool meaty things, but there's also just some basic requirements about being a council member. I mentioned the rules of procedure, attendance. We're governed by Robert's Rules of Order. Many people have participated in a meeting with that. That's what we use. Some of us are better at using it, no. But it does guide our meetings. There's also legal requirements for a council member. So we'll be governed by the Open Public Meetings Act, which means that anytime three or more council members are together, it's considered a meeting, and you'll be required to get the training for that. Also, the Public Records Act, everything we write down is a record, every email, every voice message, every text, everything. And that takes some time to get used to, and so there'll be training around that as well. You become a very public person in this life. We also do, we do training through the State Office of the Attorney General and also Association of Washington Cities, which is one of our partners, and they do training on that as well. But it's available online if you want to take a look at all of that. We're also required to file annually with the Public Disclosure Commission. So I don't know what the council will decide with this position, if they'll, someone who's going to run for office or not, but there are particular requirements with what's called the PDC online for filing financials. And as an elected official, every year, you file what's called an F1. It's a financial report that you disclose your finances. It's not quite as scary as it sounds. It is a little invasive, but it's in buckets of like monetary, like from $0 to $50,000, like, you know, if you own a home. It comes out of times in the past when people, elected officials weren't as great citizens, I would say. And so they want to ensure that elected officials are disclosing any of their resources that they have, so they make sure that people know where their money's coming from and going. So that's also a requirement. This job, council job, is a paid position. Not always they are in different councils, but this council's a paid position. We have information on the city's website. They're paid $2,300 a month. I don't know if that's accurate.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I think it might be more. And we'll make sure we have it corrected. And there's, every council member gets health insurance, and then you have the option to sign up your family for health insurance as well. And then there's retirement plans and other things like that. So as a city, we actually offer pretty good benefits to our council members. Once again, not all cities do that, but we do. Yeah, I can't remember how much it is. How much you get paid.
I think that might be the right amount. And there's an extra amount for the council president because they do additional duties.
Yeah. And then I think you get also a stipend of $200 a month. Is that correct? Something like that, to help with like, if you go to events or things like that. Do you want to add anything else about kind of that?
I guess I would add, since it may seem a little daunting with the legal pieces, one of the things every council member gets is a city computer and a city phone, so it makes it easier to be able to contain your city things. You may notice sometimes if you've ever communicated with a council member that if you communicate on a different channel, they'll say, "Send an email to me on my city email." And a lot of times, it's because it makes it easier for keeping track of public records. So if you use your personal phone or your personal computer to be, or email to send something that actually has to do with city business, if there's a public records request, you have to go into all of those places and check and return over those records. But one way that we keep it streamlined is that we all do get devices through the city, so it makes that a little bit easier. And I'd say the only other thing, you know, as a council, council members go through quite a bit of training on these different pieces after we take our oath of office. The Open Public Meetings Act in particular is one that we talk about a lot because, and if more than, if a quorum of the council is, it talks about something that we might vote on, that counts as a meeting under state law. So it means that if there are seven council members and we're going to vote on an issue, you really can't talk to more than two about it. And if, say, two council members talk about something and another two talk about something, it actually effectively counts as if all four had talked about it. So we often are very particular, and it will be something that you'll learn, but the goal was really in passing these laws to keep from backroom deals happening. And so it means that much of the work that we do is very on display because we have to do it in our meetings because there's just such a very small amount you can do with a very small group of people. Part of what we've done in recent years in establishing some subcommittees to work on things is to say, these are the three people that will be talking offline about this and bringing back some ideas to the full council for the full discussion. But we'll never have kind of that full decision-making body until we get into the public. So it's just something that is an interesting part of this job, is it's a job, even to collaborate on documents, that would count as triggering a meeting if we did a virtual collaboration unless it were filmed and publicly televised. So there's really kind of a lot of pieces, and it's an interesting and kind of fun aspect of the job to do everything in full transparency.
And that's for work. So your personal life isn't work, just to be clear. So don't think all your emails are, can be disclosed. It's really anything having to do with the city of Redmond work.
And yeah, it's part of why, actually, for example, I keep my devices very separated so that way you kind of can have that separation. The only other thing I will also note is that the financial, there are other kind of aspects around financial responsibilities of elected officials, in particular gift-giving to elected officials. There's some specific rules around that, so that'll be something that you'd want to look into as a council member as well.
I travel sometimes for work nationally, and if someone else pays for my travel, then I have to disclose it in my F1, so things like that. Or, yeah, I don't get gifts.
Yeah, most elected officials just don't accept gifts.
We just don't accept them.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's too hard. So that's kind of generally about the council. The city, to go back to the city structure, we have nine departments. We have executive, finance, fire, HR, parks, planning, police, public works, and TIS. We have a lot more information on all of those. They're pretty self-explanatory, but happy to go another time or if you have questions about the different departments of the city. That's how we're organized. We do have our own police department. We do have our own fire department. Some cities don't. Some cities contract with sheriff's office, some cities contract as a fire district. We actually, Fire District 34, which is out at Redmond Ridge, they do contract with us as a department. But we're called a full-service city with all of that. We also have a prosecutor's office, so that's interesting. If you're looking for information, we have the city website. It has all of this information on it, including city codes, city plans, policies, budget, projects, any of those things. We also have what's called a meeting information center, and there's a link on the council page if you want to look at the meeting calendar, meeting materials, and all of those. Like I mentioned, we have a partnership with Association of Washington Cities. They're a great resource. They help us out with a lot of different things, and they're a great way of network, great place to network as well. They also have what's called a mayor and council member handbook, which you can find online, and it gives a lot of the same information. We go through King County elections, so this role will be appointed in January, but we'll have to run for the November 27 election. So not '26, but '27. So that person, if they were to choose to run, would have a good year or so under the belt before they had to go through an election cycle. But that all goes through King County elections. Municipal Research and Services Center, which is called MRSC, they also have a lot of great background information about how cities and councils work. They do have this code city handbook as well. Mentioned the Public Disclosure Commission. You mentioned regional opportunities, Wirtschaft or Abundant. We also have a relationship with Sound Cities Association. It is all of the cities in King County except for Seattle. And there's a reason for it because all of the cities outside of Seattle are actually a higher population than Seattle. But Seattle, Seattle, biggest city in the state, and so they take up a lot of oxygen. And by creating this organization, we are able to have some pretty significant regional power working with all the other cities. So it's also a great resource and a great opportunity for council members to be a part of. Trying to think of else. So applications are due January 2nd. Council will be conducting in-person interviews on the 13th of January. Final interviews for the top candidates will be on January 20th in the council meeting, and the decision is supposed, hopefully, will be made that evening, and that person will be sworn in and take their seat. And that's all the information I have on my sheet of paper. Now, is there anything else you want to add about all of that stuff at the end?
No, I will just, well, I guess I'll just say that if you want to kind of get a sense of what are the different things that we've been working on in recent times, go to the meeting center and look at our council agendas. You can usually find a packet that's going to give you hundreds of pages of documents from our different meetings, but where you can kind of read through and you can see what are the issues we've been working on. In particular, some of the things that will be coming up next year, you'll see in study sessions from the end of this year. And if there are particular issues that you care about in that meeting center, you can also search for certain keywords to be able to get more of a background on particular topics. In terms of the process for the selection, the mayor outlined it. And I'll just note in the application, there's several questions to answer in addition to including things like your resume and kind of general information. And those questions get at what we'll use as kind of the initial scoring to be able to determine who are the shorter list of candidates that we'll be interviewing. So definitely pay attention to answering those questions and what's at the core of them that helps us to understand kind of your engagement with the city, with the community, your perspective that you bring to the role. And so the council is determining right now kind of what's the shared criteria so that we're all judging on a similar set of shared criteria. One of the things to note about the first round is that we wanted to be able to eliminate bias, so we'll be doing it name-blind and removing other types of, some other kind of key information, just so that way we can just look at what people's answers are and some of the information about them without knowing who they are directly. So I think that'll be good. And then I think just to underscore, all the interviews will be in-person. There won't be a remote option, since we do want to make sure that council members can come here on Tuesday nights and make the meetings and be here in person because we, as we learned, I actually joined the council just before the pandemic hit and spent some of my early times doing council via Teams, and it is not as good as being here in person with our public. So it is a very important aspect of our job.
Yeah. And it's a great job. Being an elected official is really great, and it's a huge responsibility. And so hopefully, this was good information for you. And so hopefully, this was good information for you to have, and we're happy to answer any questions that you have for us. And if you ask me a question, I'm going to repeat it because we're recording this. Any questions? I know that was a lot of information. Happy to answer. Yes?
Yeah, I was curious, budgeting by priorities, the council's priorities, the community's priorities, how do you measure like what the community's priorities might be?
Okay, so the question is, using budgeting by priorities, how do you measure what the community's priorities are? So we do it by a couple of different ways. We do a community survey every year and get some validation on the priorities that we've laid out and describe them somewhat. And we've had, the community is very supportive of the priorities that we've laid out. There are four, and I don't ask me to name them off the top of my head, but they are pretty all-inclusive, very high level. And so I think people can appreciate, like, we want a safe community. We want to make sure our resources here are used wisely. So we get validation from that. And then we also, through the budget process, we have public hearings. We're required to have at least three. We do those. People are always willing, you know, we offer people to write in to us and share with us their thoughts about how the budget process is going. And then we also have a community group that we bring in to help get validation on the way that we're budgeting and what we are budgeting. So we do a lot of different ways for community outreach. The other thing that our finance director reminded himself a couple of weeks ago is that all of those plans we mentioned, all of those things have community outreach in them as well. And so even just as a basis from the city, the Transportation Master Plan, the ESAP, the Environmental Sustainability Action Plan, all of those things have gotten a lot of community feedback in that as well to help send us on a direction that this is what the community supports. So it's a kind of all-inclusive way to get us to ensuring that where we are spending the money as a city is going to where our community expects us to.
And I'll just add that we also do some work, sometimes during the budget process, we will identify issues of things we want to follow up on and get more input on for the next process, or we want to spend some time when we're not in the middle of making the decisions about what should go in what bucket. And so in the opposite year, from the main budget decision year this year, we'll spend some time on things like our long-range financial strategy, our fiscal policies, as well as, like, right now, we're looking at all the measurements that are related to each of the budget priorities. And to be clear on kind of, so on what those priorities are and how it differs from, say, a classic budget where you might go by all the different departments of, you know, fire, police, executive, parks. Under one priority, you might have what we call multiple offers that would be from each of those different departments, but all related to making our city more sustainable, for example, or safer. For example, you know, you may have a planning project that's looking at safe bike lanes, and you may also have a police funding item that both fall under safety. So by doing that, we kind of think holistically about some of those priorities. And then we also align metrics to those to see how are we achieving against those. One of the other things that council members get is a regular quarterly financial update from our finance director so we can see, once we pass the budget, how are we tracking against that? And we actually just, I think it was a week or two, two weeks ago, we had our update, and we actually go through by priority to see, for example, places where we added certain additional investments. How are we tracking against those investments and how are those panning out, especially when we've made some changes to how we've done things before?
Great, great. Questions? Yeah?
So the council has two new incoming.
Yes.
Right, after the election. So there'll be a third new face on the council. It's hard to know with the two new ones coming in what you're going to get. But as the council sits now, what's the council missing personality-wise or, you know, leadership-wise? Or what is something you think the city would benefit from as the seventh person on the committee?
Yeah, great. So the question was, we have two new council members onboarding from the election, and then we'll have another new one. What is the, kind of make up the council, what are we missing from the council right now? I'll let you answer that one.
Well, I'm going to deflect it a little bit, but I will say, it is going to be an exciting time for our council. And actually, the reason why in council leadership, we've planned for the council retreat to be after this person comes on board is that we're going to have almost half of our council will be new. So three out of seven members will be new in the upcoming year. And so a lot of what probably the retreat will focus on is being able to get to know each other, figure out how we work together, and communicate with each other because we work on a lot of different complex issues. And so that's going to be key. And I do think part of this process of choosing who this seventh person is, is going to be figuring out what's that voice that's going to add a unique perspective to our council. I think one of the things that I have really appreciated of our current council, and I'm excited about with our new one, is that when we work on policies, you know, so often when we work on an issue, you know, we get information or proposals that come from the administration of different policy pieces that we're going to work on. And our job really is to ask good questions, engage with community, to kind of adjust on the policies so that we make them better, right? And we make them better by bringing each of our unique perspectives and the perspective from the parts of the community that we're connected to and the work that we do to get even more connected, more deeply into community. So I think I'll probably be looking for that perspective of what's a perspective maybe we don't have that would help us to make even better decisions? What's someone who's going to raise a question that actually I wouldn't raise? So I think that is going to be, and actually, one of the criteria that we will be using to assess applications will be diversity of perspective and experience. So thinking about that, both in terms of work experience as well as background and connection into different parts of our community.
That's a great answer. Good job. Questions?
I'll go again.
Sure.
At times, council meetings can become warm by public comments. And also topics or issues can come out and can be a surprise, right? Like sometimes maybe the teen center, it was hard to determine the community response to that, or Plymouth Housing, things like that. So when those things come, how do you not take anything personally from the public? And then second, any issues with your feeling of your own personal safety for yourself or your family?
Okay, so the question is about kind of two parts. One, how do you respond, or how do you react, respond to items from the audience when people are probably maybe not as happy as we'd like them to be? And then the second part is, what about personal safety? So a couple of things. One, you need really thick skin in this role. You know, it is, it is, it is a lot. People have a lot of thoughts and opinions, and you're in this role to really hear them all, whether they're good or bad, or everything in between. And so that's one thing. People have three minutes to address the council, and I'm here, and are addressing issues in the city. And I think it's important to hear from every perspective, but it doesn't mean what they're saying is something that we can act on, or it doesn't mean it's something that we would want to act on. So you just kind of have to have that perspective. You're just really in listening mode. That's why if you've listened to a council meeting, I say, you know, we generally don't respond to you because it's just community's opportunity to just speak to us. So, you know, it gets a little interesting, but that's all right. I think it's, you know, we have almost 85,000 people live in the city, so we're going to hear a lot of different ideas and things. As far as personal safety goes, we do, the police does, do help council members and myself with support for ensuring that we're safe. They do some trainings. They'll check out your house, and they'll, you know, make sure that we're in safe environments with that. So that is, unfortunately, is a concern for the current times. And so we take that very seriously and don't want anyone to feel like they are unsafe in this role, but it is an interesting time for that right now.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I would just jump in to say, you know, we take public feedback in a lot of different ways and actually seek it, right? Many council members do open office hours, will do, you know, one-on-ones with people. And so the public comment is one of our mechanisms. We also get a lot of emails. And one of the things that we do on our council is we have a council ombuds person every month, which is one council member that's assigned to respond to everyone who's written to the council. And we trade off, but that month is always a busy month for whoever is the council member. We may, that's a topic of conversation of how we want to manage that in the long run. But typically, what their job is to not share their personal opinion, but to share just the information based on what the council has made decisions on so that people kind of have the facts. So, for example, I answered hundreds of emails right after we made the decision around Plymouth Housing. And council members also will often, in addition to the ombuds, write their own personal emails. But we did make sure that every person who wrote to us on that issue got a response, and they got information. And I think in this moment where oftentimes misinformation can get out there about a lot of different things, it's part of what I at least spend a lot of time on, and especially as the council president, but all of our council members spend a lot of time kind of being able to share out information with our residents and being able to, because I think if we're going to make certain decisions, being able to explain why we made these decisions is really important. And a lot of times, I find that those are just some of the most wonderful and valuable conversations. I often will sit down with people who have come and made a very fiery public comment, and I follow up with them to say, "Would you like to grab coffee?" And we sit down and have a conversation, and by the end, you know, they're, you know, kind of ready to be able to engage in solutions, right, if they had just started from a no? Or at least feel heard. Because it's also, sometimes we may agree to disagree as well, and being able to explain kind of, here's where I'm coming from, I think is really important. So in terms of, one of the things that we likely will be talking about, I think it'll be questions that probably come in the second round interviews. We'll be assessing, actually, how people deal with conflict, how do you kind of think about engaging with the public and gathering that feedback and respecting all the different perspectives in our community while also, sometimes you also, I will say, you cannot choose to not vote on issues in this council. It's part of our council rules that you have to vote yes or no. You cannot abstain.
True.
So you do have to make a choice. So sometimes we make big decisions, and you have to decide where you're going to land. You can do a lot of work leading up to it. For example, we just made this decision about our teen center, and I and many of my colleagues spent several months engaging for many hours every single week with teens and community members to be able to understand all their perspectives, to make a good decision that felt rooted in community. But ultimately, you have to decide.
Yes, you have to vote, and if there's a tie, I'm the tiebreaker, sometimes, for something.
That's true.
The other thing I just wanted to mention before I take your question, thank you so much. The other thing I wanted to mention is that elections are political, but this job is not political. So there's no campaigning, there's no actual politics, except for the, just dealing with community and all of that. But it's a nonpolitical job. This role is nonpartisan. You, when you even file for office, it's nonpartisan. And that's extremely important because, once again, you are representing almost 85,000 people in the community, and you work for them. And I think it's really fantastic that in the state of Washington, that most local elected officials are nonpartisan because I think it keeps some of the other stuff out of the work, and you can just take care of the community. Yeah?
Thank you for all the information. And so regarding engaging with the communities, when a council member goes and meets this community, different communities, you know, so do we have any code of conduct, like, is it official and should it be informed before to the council and the mayor that you're engaging with this particular community? And I would like to know those and those.
Oh, I can say a little bit about that. You are an elected official on your own, so you can have, you have opportunities as that, and you can represent yourself. But if you're going out in the community representing, I represent the city all the time. I bring my city hat on. I'm representing the city. I'm not representing myself. And council does that as well. When they're representing the council, they're representing the council, not themselves. It is an interesting place to be, but it's actually extremely important that you communicate that out when you're in public. Go ahead.
Yeah, and I guess combined with the last question, I will note that when the council's made a decision, we don't always agree, but once a majority of the council makes a decision, when we share out information about what the council's position is, it's based on majority. So even, so we do try to encourage council members, even if you ended up dissenting, one, that we can disagree on something, and we can move on to work together and get more good work done, but also to be able to be clear on where the city and the council's position is, even if you have a personal disagreement, although you can also share that with others if you want to. But it is something that when you're in your official role, you'd say, "This is the council's position." But you can also say, "This is my personal opinion." But making that distinction is very important. To the point about engaging community, one of the things that we've also added in recent years, because we have so many amazing community-based organizations that put on lots of events, I know you know about that, and they love to invite the council. I mean, we get invited to hundreds of events throughout the year to be able to go and have your city leaders there and connecting with people. And so one of the things that we've done in recent times, we have a, just in the time that I've been on council, we got a legislative coordinator, one staff member, that helps the council with some scheduling and other pieces. And one of the things that this position does is help us to keep a calendar of all city events as well as community events on our calendar. And then we actually will have council members kind of sign up so that way we know who's going to go. One of our goals that I've had is that we have at least one representative of the council at all these different events, so that way we can be out there and connecting with people. And so that's something that I think the council will be continuing to hone, is like, how do we keep that reach out? And then also, one of the things we do in our business meetings that you'll see is during the ombuds report, when the ombuds person will report on all the emails and other messages we got and how they responded. You'll also see council members talking about what they've been hearing from community and the ways that they've been engaging. So they often will report back, like, "I went to this roundtable with community," or "I went to this event, and here's what I was hearing people talking about," or "Here was the feedback for our council." And we share that in public with each other so that we can kind of report back to the public of, "These are the things I'll be following up on." But also to share with each other so that way, hopefully, we can, sometimes those things become new items for policy, new items for our agenda. And that's, and we try to really draw a lot of our ideas from the community in terms of the policies to make sure we're addressing emerging needs, even though we also try to be a little further out looking in terms of the work that we do.
Great, thanks. Yes?
What is the council's relationship with city employees?
What is the council's relationship with city employees? I am in charge of city employees, so the goal is that council doesn't, they can be friendly to city employees, but they don't direct city employees.
If you need a report, go through the U.
Go through the director, yeah. So we kind of keep that clear line of sight. It's great.
Yeah, and I would say the main, the role of council, the only kind of piece that we have related to staff is council does have the ability to confirm directors. The mayor appoints them, but the council votes to confirm them. So those are the heads of all the departments. And then the mayor makes the decision on all the other employees that aren't director level in terms of hiring and firing, as well as the council just does the confirmation for, so the mayor also has the ability to let go of any directors, but that is not a power of the council. What we do sometimes, though, in terms of other staff too, is that sometimes, say, if we're going to work, we want to talk with a director about a topic, but they really have a staff member who's the expert on it. They will bring them into the meeting. But typically, say, if I want to talk, for example, with Jenny Lieback, our Environmental Sustainability Manager, we're also going to have Lisa Marr, who's kind of the director over her in the room, so that way we can kind of like have that discussion, and she can be following up with her supervisor. And I can follow up with Lisa or with Jenny as needed, but usually that's kind of all looped together.
Great, good question. Any other questions? This lovely afternoon. All right, well, thank you all for being here today. Please reach out if you do have any other questions. I'm mayor@redmond.gov, and she's the critzer@redmond.gov. If you have specific questions that come up and you want them answered, we're happy to answer them. But really appreciate you all being here today, and I hope this was really informative for you.